Request form, it's the quick summary of everything. And as you see, even with this adjustment, we would still have 526,154 in the sales tax fund balance that is not allocated in any way. We would also still have 1.3, a little over 1.3 million in the general fund balance that is not allocated in any way. So we would have a total of 1.8 million even with this budget transfer if you choose to approve the entire budget transfer that is unallocated, that's kind of in our savings, so to speak. That's in addition to the 1.2 million that's in our emergency fund. So we are sitting in a very healthy fiscal position for the city. The thing that you have before you is just the quick cheat sheet. This is the shortened version of everything that I first sent out several weeks ago before this item was introduced. So this is the quick summary of the five requests that we are making in total with this entire budget amendment. And if you will, we'll just go through those one by one now. The first request relates to the fire department. We're requesting $70,000 to be moved from the sales tax fund balance into the fire department. This is going to finalize the MAG corrections that we have been making in our salary side. We have been working with the fire administration and the fire union for well over a year now in trying to work through these corrections and in trying to get something that is easy to implement and that is more easy to implement going forward. What we're proposing is, and you have copies of the prior pay grid, the current grid that we're using, and the new grid that is being proposed, along with all the individual changes to the employees in the fire department. What we're proposing is this new grid not only corrects the problems that we have right now with certain people being jumped in seniority when their promotions come up or when their anniversary comes up, but it also connects the years of service with the steps. So they know exactly where they are in the grid, they know exactly where they will go when they're promoted, and it just makes it a lot easier to implement. It also separates, what we're proposing to do would separate the fire grid from the police grid so that we can better customize the pay grids for those departments, since they do have different requirements in state law and they do have different positions within each department and the promotions that are there. So that's the first one that is proposed to you. And there are several members of our fire department here tonight. Does anybody want to come speak quickly on that one?
Good evening, Council Mayor, Ms. Lacy. I was part Anthony Marr, President of Local Firefighters Association, Local 2361, need address?
Yes, please.
1-8360, South St. Charles Avenue, Oronja. Myself, Executive Board, past members of the administration, fire administration, and Ms. Lacy, we've been working pretty good effort into this over a course of a year, meeting once a month. And I just want to reiterate what she said. We all come to consensus, that was probably the best path forward. Everything that we did do was based off minimum state law, state law minimum. And we just want to ask for y'all's support. Like I said, I represent the Firefighters Association, 100% capacity, so I do represent all the employees right now currently at the Hammond Fire Department. We met with each employee each shift just to go over and explain all the details. There was no issues, it was a consensus between the Firefighters Association and the city administration, and we actually supported this. So I just ask, hopefully that y'all support it as well. Thank y'all. You got any questions for me? No, thank y'all.
I'm going to ask for any other input from the public on this item only. Okay, go ahead. The next item is the smallest of the five. It is for a meter reader software upgrade. This was something that we have been implementing to make our meter reading in-house rather than contracting it out. It's a conversation that we've had over the last year due to all the difficulties and the extra paperwork and hassles that happen inside with our contracted service. We have looked at going to other contracted groups and have found that bringing it in-house may be the best solution, so we're willing to try this. In the last budget, we did allocate for personnel. We allocated for the equipment and the trucks that would be necessary to bring meter reading in-house. This is an additional cost to basically build a bridge between the meter reading software and our financial software. And so this is a small upgrade required on our financial software end to make these two systems work together and talk to one another. So this is relatively straightforward, and this will also help us as we convert going forward. We are converting to a lot more drive-by meters. That's the other side of things that this crew would be doing is when they're not actually reading the meters, they would be installing the new meters. So it is a win-win on both sides of that, moving us forward so that hopefully we can have all drive-by meters. At this time, we think we have about 8,000 total meters out there, and roughly 2,000 of those are drive-by right now, the rest are, need to be manually read. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public on this item?
Can I speak about this?
This is about the water meter reading?
Oh.
Yes, okay. Yes.
The amount, how much was it?
Lacy. The total funds requested is $16,800.
Ms. Landrum, this has to do with the in-service that we went through, some of that a couple of weeks ago.
It is sort of related to that, but not exactly. So in that, when we had that training, one of the things that Mr. Bill was recommending to us is that we are better on top of our water system. And one of the things that we believe with having our own workers looking at those meters rather than contracting it out, is they're more vested in when they see problems with that going on, we can get on it faster than with a contract worker who's then giving us a report at the end of the month.
Yeah, I got a question. I see you talking about for hiring for in-house?
Yes.
And I'm trying to see what price we talking about paying them per hour or per year? Am I too far ahead?
I do not have that offhand, but I could look in my budget book real quick and let you know that. Hang on just a minute.
Because that was already budgeted? Where do they have that budgeted?
They're roughly going to be paid? 25,000 a year. That's, we only budgeted for half of the year since we didn't know when exactly the contract was going to roll over versus when we were going to hire the people. We have hired them, I just don't remember what their hourly salary is. They make around 25,000 to 26,000 base salary and then plus benefits.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
One question, how much were we paying that company, the leasing company? I don't, do you, I mean?
I don't know that offhand either. I can go look at that. This is something that has already been, so those items were already budgeted for this year, and we're at the very end of implementing this in-house. So we've already bought the trucks, we've bought the hardware equipment, we've bought the software that goes with that hardware, we've hired the people, we just need to do this small software upgrade to finish the project. Next item? Third item out of the five, Airport Road Improvements. We're requesting $60,000 to go towards this. The information that was forwarded to the council over the last couple of weeks included a feasibility report that showed the entire description and the scope of the project. It showed you diagrams about how the two J-turns would be installed on Airport Road. To remind the public, this is down by Chappaheila. It's a safety and a traffic flow issue. This is something we've been working with DOTD, with the parish, and with Chappaheila and some of the other traffic generators in that area. The growth has been phenomenal. Chappaheila not only has become a destination for a lot of sports, tourism, recreation, but we've also had a lot of growth on High Park Boulevard, which is a street that is owned by the city, with a lot of different manufacturing companies come in. For instance, that's where Wayfair Distribution is located and some of our other major distribution centers, Graham Packaging is down there also. All of that conflict between the 18-wheelers delivering those goods and services and the general people using Chappaheila, and then along that corridor as a whole with the fast food establishments and some of the other establishments right there, has really created a traffic nightmare. DOTD has looked at this for a while. They would love to go to roundabouts sometime in the future, but that could be 10, 20, 30 years down the road, depending on when the numbers really match up for them to make that kind of investment. So our folks down in New Orleans, our Regional Planning Commission also took a look at this, and what they're proposing to do is install two J-turns. One would be just north of kind of the Popeyes and Waffle House area that works just like a U-turn. You would have a solid median down the road so that as you're coming out from Chappaheila, you can no longer make left turns, you only make a right turn, and then jig-jog back to the interstate. This would de-conflict a lot of the traffic, improve the flow, and obviously improve the safety of that corridor as a whole. The benefit of this is that the city's portion of 60,000 is only 10% of the project. The parish is willing to put up the other 10% of the project, and the feds will pay the 80% of the project. So this is really a good leverage of all of our funds coming together. And so what you had forwarded to you was both the feasibility report and the latest cost estimate. We do think that 60,000 should be plenty to take care of the project. And again, it's only the city's 10%, and we're being matched by partners for the other 90% of the cost. So this really is a cost-effective way to make huge improvements to a gateway into Hammond. Do you have anyone here from the public for this item with questions? Council members? The next item, number four? Number four. This is the airport land acquisition. This is the largest of our requests. We are requesting $150,000 to make this a go. Two things are happening here. One is that we're getting a million-dollar grant from the FAA passed through the state to make this land acquisition. This is something that has shown up on our safety reports for the airport for many years now. What we need to do is purchase the 20 acres that is southeast of the airport to be able to cut down the trees and to recover 690 feet of the runway. Again, this is something that has been cited in our FAA and our DOTD aviation report for many years. Allowing this additional feat of runway, acquiring that land and building it out will allow for our airport growth and also for bigger and heavier planes to come in. The investment also shows the city's commitment to the airport, which makes us more eligible for FAA grants and funds going forward. I do realize it's a lot of money. It's 150,000 that we're asking to be allocated now. We did not know this was going to come down in this fiscal year, otherwise we would have put the entire money that we needed into Grant Match Fund. And that's why this money is going to Grant Match for that purpose. When we got the first appraisal, it was at 1.1 million. We thought we had enough money and we were going to be able to go forward. Then DOTD Aviation evaluated that appraisal, said that it was not done with the proper methods that they liked to see, and so they required a second appraisal to be performed. The second appraisal came back at 1.3 million. And so that's why we're here requesting additional funds to make this project go. What we're in jeopardy of is losing the $1 million from the FAA and DOTD Aviation if we do not move forward with this project during this fiscal year. Those funds will expire at the end of the fiscal year, and so that's why we are requesting this now.
I know I got the two appraisals, but did they actually send us some kind of documentation on why they didn't like the first appraisal?
I don't know. David? I don't know.
Evening, everybody. Dave LeBoeuf, Airport Director. It had to do with the comps that were used. The DOTD didn't like the properties in the area that they were using for the comps, and they didn't think that achieved the result that they were looking for. So they asked him to go back and use different comps. They specified in a conversation with him, which wasn't shared with me, exactly how they wanted, what they wanted those comps to be. But we can probably get that information and follow up.
And it had to do with the methods in the book that they used, because the same appraiser did the follow-up appraisals.
Exactly.
So one done by a second.
It was the same person both times?
So there was something about a yellow line appraisal, but then the way the guidelines or the book that FAA wanted them to use.
Okay.
You know anything? Fire, fire's mentioned.
Correct. There's a minimum standard that the state uses to acquire property in the FAA, excuse me, the state aviation group is required by law to use that for their appraisals. So the first didn't, there were a couple items that were missed in the first appraisal that they were obligated to go back and do another appraisal in order to meet the state standards, so they could offer the grant to the city.
Devon?
Yeah, I got a question. How long is the runway as of right now? How many feet are there?
Right now, we have 6,501 feet of total runway. What we have is 690 feet of that that aren't usable because of those trees across Highway 190. So we would recover all 690, we'd have the full 6,501, which makes a big difference for a lot of aircraft.
If we buy these 28 acres, right?
Yes, sir.
The cost associated with purchasing property on the north end and building an additional 690 feet to compensate far exceeds the 1.3 that they're looking at to purchase the property across 190.
So they sent over some kind of denial on the first appraisal, or it was just kind of, they just said, well, we didn't like it, just that appraisal?
Right, right. DOTD has their own, they have internal appraisal reviewers, and they looked at it, and they didn't, they didn't like the first one, so they basically directed that the second one be done. And it took a little bit of time to get the second one done because the appraiser obviously had moved on to other stuff at that point, so.
Originally, we had 200,000 appraised. So after the first appraisal came in, it was 1.1. So we took the 100,000, put it back in the general fund balance. Then this came through, and we realized we needed 200,000.
Was the owner agreeable to selling after 1.1?
He knew that it was whatever the FAA had decided was, he knew that we could only pay fair and open value to what his property was worth. So he really didn't have an opportunity to say, I want more money for my property.
But what he, did we negotiate to see if he wanted to, he wanted a lot more than what he's giving us, 1.3? He thinks it's worth a lot more than that.
And it wasn't until, sorry.
And I basically emphasized the fact that he had been talked to by previous mayors and never really wanted to sell, didn't expect to move, and had family members move, and he actually made the call to me and said, hey, are you still interested in moving my residence to Compton, where he's moving? And are you still interested? So I said, well, let me go through the paper channels. So the first thing was to be able to cut out a grid, because he said, you know, I have 200 acres. So we couldn't afford the 200, nor do we need it. I said, let me go with the FAA, and I asked them what tree we need for this runway extension to be rented back to us? And it was the 29.35 acres. So we carved that out, then the next process came about was the appraisal. The first appraisal came in, they said, you didn't use the right manual, you needed to do the appraisal. Okay, so that's the road we've come down.
So I've looked at both these appraisals pretty closely, having a little bit of familiarity with appraisals. To me, what I see in the difference between the first appraisal and the second appraisal is simply an increased value in land, cost per acre. They did nothing to increase the value of the actual buildings, because I understand there's at least two houses there with significant value. So we're purchasing a lot of money, or a lot of money's going to some houses, and then an even more amount of money is going to some land. And the first appraisal has a per-acre value of 31,000 or 32,000. The second appraisal has a 46,000 per acre. You know, I, at the same time the second appraisal came out, there's a recent person who purchased land 1.6 miles away for $23,000 an acre of vacant land. We're not paying for houses, and they separated it, so it's very clear that you have very broad range of per-acre value. And I just feel like that's a lot of money to pay $46,000 an acre of land when other land is going for around 23, 1.6 miles away.
Considering that fact, and considering the fact that the federal government's given us a million dollars, if you take the 300,000, you divide it by the 29.35 acres, it's $15,000 an acre, $15,000 an acre. Not to mention, hopefully, we can get money from the trees that we cut down, which would reduce the cost of those acres even more by the cost, the actual cost to the city of Hammond. This is an opportunity we really don't want to lose.
And I don't want to lose the opportunity, I'm not saying that. I just, I feel that we are greatly overpaying per acre, whether it's our million dollars or the million dollars from the state. It's still taxpayer money. We're overpaying for per-acre value of vacant land that we have to cut, hopefully can get decent amount of money. It's pine trees, those aren't going for a whole lot right now. And two structures, do they need to be torn down? Are we going to rent them? I mean, what are we going to do with these? We're going to let them sit there and be a liability to the city? I mean, these are questions that I imagine have been somewhat thought about, and I just have a problem with the price. Quite honestly.
And I think the price is a little steep on that property, and that's why I was really asking about the, if there's any kind of document of any sort that, more of a reason than just that they didn't like it. I've been doing real estate for about 10 years, it's just something just doesn't seem right on the first appraisal by, they didn't like the method of it.
Right.
It just, it just doesn't seem right.
We can always go back to DOTD and ask them to put something in writing for us on what exactly was the problem there. But these are some pretty extensive conversations we had with them, and they were very, they were very clear in those kinds of conversations to us. Now, I am by no means anything close to knowledgeable or an expert on real estate, but I would hope that with the development that's going on in and around the airport, the access road directly to I-12 of Airport Road, that the property right there around the airport would be considerably worth more than perhaps something that was a mile or two down the road. I think that's got to factor into it a little bit.
And to be clear, we have until the close of the fiscal year to actually spend the 1 million from the state?
30 June.
What type of commitment do we hear from the owner?
We have a verbal commitment at this point to sell at that price. Once we are able to pass this, then we'll get, we'll get a conditional sale document drawn out, which the state is specifying as well. They're giving us the format for that.
And that's the sale for the 1.3?
1.3, yes, sir.
And if, as David said, you have until June 30th for it to actually spend it. If that money's not spent, it goes back into the aviation trust fund, and they reapportion it, not necessarily to Hammond.
Almost definitely not to Hammond. It'll go to another airport. They'll use it to cover shortfalls and other projects that have been funded already.
So David, the guy that, whatever firm or company that did the appraisal, does this firm or company always use by the state when it comes down to properties like this, whether with Air Force?
I'm not familiar with this particular appraiser myself, Mr. Juven. I know that he's done work in and around the area before. Right. He's worked for a variety of interests.
So my question is, you stated that the state has a certain model route that they use when they appraise a property like this. It would seem to me he would have known it from the start if he's done this type of appraisal work for the state.
I'm not sure about that. Whatever his rationale was, I'm sure, I mean, he felt very strongly about that, and it took a conversation with the state directly with him to, for him to say, okay, yeah, I understand, I understand what you want now, and he went back and he redid that. I wasn't privy to that conversation, though, so.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Anyone from the public have an input on this? Number five.
The last item that we're requesting is to go towards the air traffic control tower to install an elevator and to build out the floors. We're requesting $100,000. This money will go to the current project account. Right now, we have two other grants that are being leveraged with this. It's a $284,500 that includes both state capital outlay funds and Delta Regional Authority grant programs. What was sent to the council prior to the meetings a couple of weeks ago was the plan layout, so it shows you exactly what's getting built out in this whole project, the updated cost estimate, and the timeline of when the funding came in from Delta Regional Authority, when it then became active through state capital outlay. This is something that we have been working on since the tower was built. So this has been an over-five-year project in trying to get funds secured and then have enough funding to be able to go forward and finish essentially the tower that was envisioned in the first part of this project. When the first, when the tower was first envisioned, it came back and we bid it out, and it came back overbid. And so the elevator was removed, this part of the project was removed in order to make it more affordable and in order to be able to build the tower and stand it up. We have seen the tower has been a phenomenal addition to our airport, and we have, fortunately, the National Guard is up there and handles all of the control tower staffing. They also run a national training center out of there, and so the elevator and some of these other build-outs, there's lots of things that can be done in terms of flexibility with the remaining floors in the tower and just with bringing it all to final fruition.
I know that Councilman Andrews and I went up there and climbed those five flights of stairs, so it would certainly be an improvement. I will say that I like the idea that they would be able to bunk some military there for national emergencies. I think that would be a great asset to our area.
Also, they mentioned that it would be able to use it as a training facility too, which I think is a great plus.
They actually won an award last year, a national award for the training that is already going on in that place, and this would just help expand that and that presence. Anyone here from the public with comments on this? No? All right. That concludes the public hearing. Now the regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews?
Present.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Present.
Councilman Wales?
Present.
Councilman DiViterio?
Present.
Councilman Leo?
Present.
If you all please stand, and I'll ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer.
With grace and love, return to heaven, the Father, we just give you glory and honor and praise, for this is the day that you've made, we rejoice and we're glad about it. Father, we thank you for your darling son, who died upon the cross, that we too would have access to the true life. Father God, we thank you for the blood that was shed just to protect us and keep us. Now, Father God, we thank you that everything this evening will be done decent and order and pleasingly in your sight, when you will get the glory, you will get the honor, and you will get the praise. In Jesus' most holy name, we pray. Amen.
I ask all veterans and active military to render the proper salute.
Praise the Lord, the Lord, the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice.
Council reports. The first item on our agenda is an energy representative. We have asked Ms. Eunice Harris to come and speak to us about smart meters. I know I and a couple other council members have been presented with some concerns regarding these smart meters, and we wanted to give a brief, a chance for a brief discussion on that. I will limit public input when necessary because we do have a lot of things to get through here. But hopefully, everyone can come together and get some information here and contact information if your answers have not, your questions have not been answered. Ms. Harris.
Good evening, and thanks to your Honorable Mayor Pete Panapinto and to you, the council. We at Entergy appreciate the opportunity to inform you about Entergy Louisiana's advanced metering infrastructure and initiatives. And to ensure that you receive a complete picture of the advanced meters initiative, I brought with me an Entergy team to assist you, of which two I will ask to speak to you, to the council tonight. One, I have with me Mark Kleheimer, who's the Vice President of Regulatory and Public Affairs. And I also have with me Andrew Owens, who's the Director of Regulatory Research, and these two will speak to you tonight. We do have two additional Entergy team members here tonight, and they'll be available to you, for your services after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to say a few words about this important. Thank you, appreciate the opportunity to say a few words about this important initiative. First and foremost, I want to let everybody know that at Energy we are committed to providing safe, reliable, and affordable energy to our customers. We believe that the installation of these net meters will do exactly that, it'll enable us to continue to provide safe, reliable, and affordable energy. We believe that the advanced meters are safe, they'll enhance our ability to restore, identify, and respond to outages when they occur, and they'll provide significant savings. So I'll give you a little bit of background on, on, you know, how we got here, what we're doing. First off, just as far as customer rates go, this is always what people are concerned about. According to the Department of Energy's Energy Information Administration, this is a kind of clearinghouse of information that the US has, Louisiana's electric rates are the lowest in the country. Entergy Louisiana is largely responsible for that, we have about a little bit over half of all of the customers in the state, and we have the lowest bills in the state. To give you an example, customers in Hammond on Entergy Louisiana, last year for 2018, your bill times your usage, or your, your rate times your usage gets you a bill, would have paid about thirteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars. A neighboring CLECO customer would have been about four-hundred dollars more at about seventeen-fifty, and a DEMCO customer would have been about two-twenty-five more at about fifteen-seventy-three. All of those are great rates relative to where the country is, we all have very, very low rates relative to the country. The problem is, the usage that we have in Louisiana is very high, of course, it's hot here, we have air conditioners going all summer long, customers use a lot of electricity, so when you look at what a, a customer, an electric customer is paying, although the rates may be the lowest in the country, the actual bill that's coming out of their pockets may be about the middle, a little bit under the middle for that whole country. So what we're trying to do is look at initiatives that can help customers manage their bills and lower their overall bills. So that's why we embarked on this project to install advanced meters in Louisiana. As I said, about fifty percent, or I don't think I did say it yet, about fifty percent of all meters in the US have been converted to advanced meters. There are in fact a couple projects within Louisiana that have already occurred. We had a few pilots in and around the Baton Rouge area about five, seven years ago, CLECO has installed advanced meters and several of the co-ops have done so. All of this has been with the approval and the oversight of the Louisiana Public Service Commission. So going back to how we got here on, on our current project, we made an application with the LPSC in November of 2016. In July of seventeen, they approved our application to install these meters, and it's basically based upon the significant benefits that they bring to our customers. You have benefits in a, in a couple different, a couple different areas that I'll talk about, you have operational savings from us, the company will spend less money on remote reads, on disconnects, reconnects, on, you know, habitual places where you're going to have people moving in and out, you're rerunning less, less folks to go check on those, will have improved outage management. As I mentioned, when the power is out, we know generally, sometimes very accurately where it is, but not always. You know, you may be in a cul-de-sac and we think five customers are out, and there are actually six, and we think five are back on and one of them's out. So there can be times when customers will still have outages that we're not aware of, advanced meters will help us do that. I think the real benefit here is for customers to manage their usage, in connection with our advanced meter and a portal, a web portal that customers can go to, they'll have more real-time information about how much electricity they use. If I think about myself, you know, when my kids are running air conditioning in the summer or something when they're home and I'm not there, if there's, you know, a hot day, we all know our air conditioners are running, but what if I pull the shades one day, did it make a difference? Well, I, I don't know, we don't know. With an advanced meter, you would have that kind of information, you would know day-to-day, month-to-month what you're actually doing. There are other safety issues, and we don't serve gas in, in, in Tangier Maho, but it will allow us to identify kind of excessive usage, excessive, excessive volume changes, so that'll help with theft detection. And then finally, it's a platform really for demand response in the future, I think people have always heard, if you could run your dishwasher, if you could run your laundry sometime, you know, put it on later at night when, when power's cheaper, well, you don't really see that on your bill. In the future, once these are in, we'll have an opportunity to provide rates that are tiered in a way where customers will actually see the benefit that they're bringing to, you know, everybody when they do that. So we made the application with the LPSC, we're going to spend about three-hundred-and-thirty million dollars on these projects throughout the state, and at the end of the day, we see net benefits of over a hundred-and-ninety million dollars in net benefits to our customers over time. As I said, we made the application in November of sixteen, about nine months later they approved it, in July of seventeen, but they kept one issue out, which was, what if customers don't want the meters? What if customers want to opt-out? The original order said that we should provide an opt-out, and we should provide a cost-based opt-out and information consistent with what we had in our application, but I think the LPSC, the Louisiana Public Service Commission, I'm sorry, I didn't say that, who regulates Entergy and other electrical providers, really struggled with, how do you balance the desire of, of folks to maybe not have this come in versus the value that's being foregone or the incremental costs that are going to be charged because you're going to have to do this? And if you think about it, meter reading is, is a, is a good example. Right now, we go, you know, neighborhood to neighborhood, street by street, you know, just up and down. If, if we have, you know, a hundred of our customers out of our one-point-one million customers opt-out, that's going to be, and, and it's a different deal, you know, somebody may be driving twenty-three minutes in between this read and five minutes between the next. So we put together a cost-based set of charges that we would have for customers. In Louisiana, they included about an eighty-two dollar upfront charge one time, and then an ongoing cost of sixteen dollars and thirty-five cents a month. We took that to the commission, the commission thought over it for quite some time, and they cut that dramatically, they waived the entirety of the upfront costs, so there is no upfront cost, and they took the sixteen-thirty-five on a monthly basis down to fourteen dollars. To put that in perspective, other operating areas where Entergy serves, in Texas has an upfront charge of a hundred-and-eighty-three, again, we do not have that, they have an ongoing monthly charge of about thirty bucks. Entergy Arkansas has an upfront of sixty-three, with an ongoing charge of about twenty-two, Mississippi has an upfront of ninety-eight, with an ongoing of twenty-seven. So, we were able to provide cost-based options to the commission that I think were cheaper than some of our sister companies, certainly cheaper than other areas in the country. However, the commission still took action on that and said, wait a minute, I want to balance those who might want to opt-out on this, who have legitimate beliefs, you know, they have concerns on safety, whatever it is, and we can talk, we'll talk about that in a moment, but want to balance their concerns with the overall value that this program's going to bring to everybody, because if somebody opts out, that creates a cost that's going to be picked up by other customers. So, turning to safety, and, and I think we'll probably have more conversation about this, but, you know, as I said, over fifty percent of all the meters in the US are now advanced meters, utilities are using safe technology, as I said, they are safe, they are FCC-approved, the FCC is the Federal Communications Commission. The FCC sets RF, which is radio frequency limits, and requires that all radio communicating devices be tested to ensure that they meet federal standards before they are allowed to transmit within the radio spectrum. When they looked at advanced meters and they studied these, these meters will transmit around three minutes a day, so they go every fifteen minutes, I believe, and, and it's a, a short burst, but if you think about it, it's running about three minutes a day. Studies have shown that if you were continuously standing in front of an advanced meter, next to it, with no wall in between you, not ten feet away, not thirty feet away, and you were continuously standing there, you would, your highest possible exposure from that meter would be about seventy times less than the FCC limits. The World Health Organization, as I said, the FCC has looked at these, the World Health Organization has said, and this is a quote from, from the health organization, "To date, all expert reviews on health effects of exposure to RF fields have reached the same conclusion." These, there have been no adverse health consequences established from exposure to RF fields at levels below the international guidelines of exposure limits published by the International Commission on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection." That is the background, as I said, throughout the country, utilities are doing this, over half of all meters have been converted to advanced meters, there is a value proposition for all of our customers here. These authorities have provided, these are safe. For somebody who believes that they are not, there is an opt-out option. That opt-out option was reduced dramatically from what cost-based options were. That's the background I wanted to start off with.
Do you want me, let's, let's get to the audience, is there anyone, I'm sure there are, who would like to come up and, and speak? Please state your name and address, I'm going to give you each three minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Lucy Armand, I'm a Hammond resident. Um, smart meters are emitting-
Sorry, can I get your, your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, four-three-four-eight-two, McLean Lane, Hammond, Louisiana. Smart meters are emitting radio frequency radiation throughout the day and night. Radio frequencies emitting from smart meters are the same as those from cell phones, routers, and cellphone towers. Overexposure to radio frequency radiation is hazardous to our health. The World Health Organization classifies radio frequency radiation as a Class IIb carcinogen or a possible carcinogen. This matters to me a great deal because my daughter Lily is a brain tumor survivor. She had a complete resection of a rare, a rare brain tumor when she was three years old. We are very blessed because she is thirteen years old today and she has had no recurrence of her cancer. We try to limit her exposure to radiation as well as other carcinogens. However, we are realistic and we know that we cannot avoid electromagnetic radiation altogether, but we do what we can to limit it. We turn off our cell phones, we remove them from our bedrooms, and we turn off our Wi-Fi router at night. If we received one of Energy's smart meters, we would not have the option to limit our exposure to the radio frequencies the meter is emitting. Also, the smart meter would be located close to my daughter's bedroom. Radio frequency, radio frequency radiation is a type of non-ionizing radiation, and no safe amount has been established by the Federal Communications Commission, which is the regulatory body that is supposed to oversee this kind of thing. In fact, the FCC has only set safety standards for ionizing radiation such as that from medical x-rays and sunlight. To my knowledge, the FCC has not updated their safety standards for radiation since nineteen ninety-six, when our technology was very different. Shouldn't we set safety standards for non-ionizing radiation before we start adding smart meters and smart appliances to our homes? Luckily for Energy customers, there's the choice to opt-out of receiving one of these new advanced meters. You can pay fourteen-thirty-five a month to keep your analog meter. It's confusing to me that we would have to pay fourteen-thirty-five to keep our current analog meter. On the opt-out form that Energy sent to me at my request, it states that the opt-out fee is to cover the additional costs that the company will incur for equipment, monthly meter readings, ongoing maintenance, and visits to the premises to manually perform meter reading services. Are we already paying for these services now? I believe Energy customers should be able to opt-out of getting smart meters at no extra cost. This is especially true since we have no evidence, to my knowledge, that smart, smart meters have been proven safe, because they're not considering non-ionizing radiation at all. In the end, it seems to me as though Energy is looking out for its own interests over its customers. According to Energy's website and their official Facebook page, they will be charging customers two dollars and twenty-two cents per month for the next fifteen years, totaling just over three-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars per household, so that Energy can recover the cost that they incurred while preparing for the advanced metering infrastructure. Essentially, this means that customers are being forced to buy abusive equipment that Energy wants us to have and that we as customers never asked for. As a customer, this just doesn't seem fair to me, and I would like Energy to better explain their reasoning.
Thank you.
Should I respond?
There are, you might want to hear a song.
Well, if I could, if I could say one, one thing, just on the, on the front end of that. When, when you think about the cost that we are recovering today and the cost that we're going to have on, on the meters, our bill is presented in several different pieces. You have a base rate, you have fuel rate, you have some riders to collect things like storms. Our base rates, we, we are going to collect these dollars for the AMI charge within our base rates, because there's incremental infrastructure that's being put out there, there's systems associated with these meters, everything. The benefits that go to customers are going to flow through a fuel adjustment, which is an automatic adjustment. You don't probably see it every month, but you know, your bill may, may vary, I may even have what it is this month, it's probably about thirty dollars, but your bill will go up based upon the fuel adjustment, your savings are going to go back through the fuel adjustment. The savings of the, the lack of the future meter reading costs are going to go through the automatic formula rate plan review that we do on an annual basis. We go to the commission every year, we file it in May, it's based upon the twelve-year, twelve months prior, the calendar year, and rates change in September. And so all of these are flowed in there, and the way the commission looked at this, and I think it's appropriate, is to say, this individual component is going to go through, your incremental cost is going to go through here, folks who choose to opt-out of the program are going to be charged for the cost that they incur there. All of the other savings automatically flow through ratemaking, so I, I think it's covered. I mean, I think, I'm, I will say I'm, I'm not an expert in advanced metering, I am an expert in ratemaking, and I think that the commission's approach to this flows all of these benefits back to customers.
But, we never ask for smart meters, we never ask to be part of this, why are we, why do we have to cover the cost of your decision? Why can't we have our own analog meters?
Again, the value, the value of this type of project is that you're doing it throughout this, throughout the state with all of our customers. That's been done nationally that way, I mean, Andrew, I don't know if you've got a better way to look at it, I mean, there's, there's synergies in these activities.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
If this were an opt-in-
This is going to just really drag on, I'm quite certain. What I would like to do is, I had, I would like to know how, how you can opt-out, if you could tell us, very briefly, how you can do it without calling one-eight-hundred Energy and, and doing all the steps, because I've had some constituents ask that, if we could find out an easy way to opt-out and then invite people who came here to discuss this, to have these conversations with the representatives who are here today, we have a very long agenda, I know we've got to get to.
No, and we appreciate the opportunity that you invited us here tonight to speak. So we are replacing all of our meters over a three-year period across four states, so it's just under three million meters, so it's a very significant project, obviously the Louisiana portion is what Mark was describing. The process that we're following is trying to be very upfront in communicating with all of our customers. So, the timeline and the way it works is approximately ninety days before an installation will occur, a customer will receive a letter and a two-page frequently asked questions. That letter will give them an estimated timeline for when we would be replacing their meter, if you have questions or concerns, please contact us, and then two pages, front and back, of frequently asked questions, because we know people have questions, what are, what is this new technology, what's it about, what, how do I benefit from this? We also have a website that customers can go to that have a lot of additional frequently asked questions, we put a tremendous amount of time and effort, I've worked on this project for more than four years, of thinking through every aspect to make sure that our customers have the information they need and understand why we've done this. And in terms of, of just an analog or a way to think about something that's in your lives today, I have three teenage children, I have, all of them have cell phones, I have a cellphone in my pocket. Each month I have to monitor data usage, and there's months that we go over. The information that I get back from AT&amp;T lets my family make better decisions of using data, and if I go over, I know I've got to deal with that with my kids.
But we're worried about the health implications for the children and cancer, and everybody else who's sick and sensitive to it, and you're going to inundate the whole community with more EMF, we already can't handle some of these cell towers.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, can you just tell us how to opt-out? And then I'm going to ask-
And they can't opt-out from a community that is radiating.
So, in that communication, if someone has concerns or questions, they can call our one-eight-hundred-and-entergy number, same customer service number-
No, we're asking here because you're not looking out for human health, you're pushing this forward on us and we don't want it.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry, we need to keep the comments.
Well, we wanted, we came here to comment, and you're going to write us out of the comments right now, and you're going to let industry talk on behalf of human health, that's not acceptable.
So-
You pray to God here? This is the devil, this is industry selling you the death of your children, go ahead. Excuse me, but I can't stand in the presence of the devil, telling lies to people who are God-fearing, and ignoring that there's children that already are having cancers that are not explained, and we know, we have the tumor results, you're saying that this, the W World Health Organization already said it's a carcinogen, but you're saying, oh, no, they're talking out of two sides of their mouth, the Navy knows, the, the Russians were bombarding the embassy in, in Moscow.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, can you step out and we, we can do another meeting, this is not the time for this.
You're going to need to do another meeting if you want to represent the people and the health of the people, because- the health of the people, because this is BS. I came out here to represent the people. You guys aren't doing that. You're definitely not doing that. You're representing industry. There's nothing wrong with creating jobs and hardwiring stuff, but this EMF is already killing us. There are people who are sick, who are sick from their neighbor's stuff, and you know what? They overcharge. They overcharge two to three times in certain places. You actually can make more money paying for the opt-out. Not only do they overcharge, PG&E went bankrupt in California. Did you know that? Why did PG&E go bankrupt in California? Because of those fires, the campfires, smart meter related, and then the gas lines that end up blow up, and now the PG&E related. I'm leaving. I'm leaving. Yes, sir, with joy. I didn't help take the devil. In a place that prays to God. Pray for the lives of your children. Thank you.
All right, let's wrap this up, please.
Sure, absolutely. So, in that process, if someone has concerns and contacts us, we will send them a form. If they are within the 90 days of when their meter would be replaced, they return that form to us. In the case of Louisiana, there's no upfront payment. We'll take that form as long as we get it within 60 days. They would not have their meter replaced. There is an ongoing monthly fee. Mr. Cleaver described why that fee exists. All of that was based on information costs that we provided to the commission that they approved. I would note, though, one quick thing. Other utilities in Louisiana haven't necessarily included an opt-out. So, we were very thoughtful and deliberative in how we approached this. We wanted people to have a choice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on now. Item B. I'm sorry, I'm going to-
I just want to say three things.
No, I'm sorry. We can do this another time.
They're not getting the public with the right information, so. I came here, I spoke with the representative.
If the-
Those, the Energy guys got an opportunity to speak a good, long time, but the public didn't get that same opportunity to speak.
Right. We just don't have time for, I would like, if the Energy would speak, representatives could speak to people in the lobby, that would, I think, serve a purpose here. But we have a two-page agenda that we have got to get through.
Excuse me, Madam President. We will be available, some of us will be available, to answer some questions after the meeting.
So, could you schedule a meeting to address all the issues that is not, so it is the only item on the agenda? Is that an option?
That's an option.
And so, can we do that so that people can address the other concerns that they have about this issue?
Yeah, we can.
Can we do that?
Yes, we're not going to schedule it today, because we need to look at calendars, but yes. Okay. All right, let's go to item B, the Wilbur Dangerfield Committee. Sir, sir, can you all step out in the lobby for that? I'm sorry. Thank you.
The Wilbur Dangerfield Committee, we will be having a meeting on the 14th at 5:00 to make our selection for who will receive that award on the 26th, our last council meeting of this month.
Thank you. Item C, Councilman Wells.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. One of the issues I'm having, I sent the email out on the 25th, 2019, January, gets to Robert Morgan, them office, to his secretary, requesting a ditch be cleaned on Mooney Avenue from Florida Street off of Florida to the end of Mooney Avenue. As of today, the second month, the 12th date, 2019, they started on the ditch, but they haven't finished. And the problem I'm having now is that I got 15 other streets wanting their ditch cleaned. I talked to Robert Williams on the 28th, first month of 28, 2019. He told me what all he couldn't do. And every time somebody in my neighborhood or my community asks me something, if I tell them what I can't do, the first thing they're going to tell me why I'm here. I talked to Mr. Robert Morgan on the first month, the 29th, 2019. He told me, him and Robert Williams both told me, whatever I need to do, I have to see the mayor. I have to see the mayor on getting a ditch cleaned, a ditch. So, the mayor took it upon himself on the first month, 2028, to take the fence down in Mooney Park. Everybody in my community asking me why I took the fence down. I say, no, you need to talk to your mayor. And asking why he took the fence down, I'm not going to take no fence down in the park. So, this is the problem that you about to encounter right now. You're going to have folks driving out there in their cars, doing doughnuts on the grass, all this here you just picked up. And so, I got 15 other streets. Kansas Street, address 215, they need their ditch cleaned. Carolina Street, address 109, they need their ditch cleaned. George Perkins Senior Drive, South Spruce Street, address 707. Howard Street, address 1313. Live Oak Drive, address 1405. Natchez, address 512. Howard Street, address 186. Howard Street, address 1704. Natchez, address 106, 703, 707. But I did get a chance to speak to Robert Morgan again, and he did tell me this here. If a tree fall down, their first priority is the tree first. Since then, so we're talking about all these here days, so I want to ask Robert Morgan and Mr. Mayor, how many trees have fell down since the time y'all started on Mooney Avenue, all the way to this here date right now?
First of all, let's address the fence. Did you not say you wanted the fence down? Did you not say you wanted the bathrooms down? Did you not say you wanted the basketball facility down and moved? Did you not say you wanted the fence down?
Yes, no, I said I wanted the basketball facility moved back 75 feet. That's what I said.
We have a master plan for that. You did not say you wanted the fence down?
No.
Okay. All right, as far as the ditches are concerned, we definitely disagree on that, and we will agree to disagree, because you said you wanted the fence down. Robert, you want to come up here? Robert mentioned to me, I asked him what happened on Mooney Street from Mooney to Morris Street to Phoenix, on the ditches being cleaned. He said it was 80% clean. When Robert pulls off of jobs to go do other jobs, there's a reason for it. I asked him two days ago, how are we looking on Mooney? He said, we're 80% done. Robert Williams lives in the area. Robert says, Pete, I live here. I know what drains and doesn't drain. I promise you, I drive these roads every morning when I go to work, especially when it's raining. It may look like there's a problem with a ditch, because there's some leaves in it, but that doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be cleaned. So, Robert, go ahead and explain the ditch cleaning.
All right, I'm going to do the best I can. I'm Robert Morgan. I work with the district department for the city of Hammond. There are three, maybe four ditches that hadn't been cleaned on Mooney, Devon. I talked to Ms. Reeves, Ms. Bell, at a vacant lot. Once they're cleaned, the only other project would be to clean the pipes with the sewer truck, if it's available. That truck belongs to the water and sewer department. If they have a sewer priority, they get the truck. If they don't need the truck, and everything works out, the right operator shows up for that truck, I have one person that runs that truck, Harry Brumfield. He's been out sick. If he's at work tomorrow and that truck's available, they can ride those covers of the ditches they've been cleaning for. The other three ditches takes about another two-hour worth of work, that project would be finished. These other spots, I told you all at the meeting the other day we had, have your constituents call the secretary with the work order, get their name, their address, what they want done, because when I get to them, I want to talk to them about their problem. So, if you got a list, she would email to Dory, she'll be glad to put work orders in. We took in over 250 work orders in the last two weeks of what we have on paper. That's not the other little projects that we do. When I leave your ditch cleaning process to go do another tree, or a road cave in, or a sidewalk collapses, it's not that we don't want to finish your job, we just got to get back to it when we do the other projects that come up, that at the time were more pressing that need to be completed. I don't know what else to take. Anybody, I mean, anybody else have a problem with what we're doing, the way that I'm doing it? Did it all fall back on me? I'm the guy. The mayor puts me in charge of all this public works. If you got an issue, I'll take care of it. If I'm not getting it done fast enough, I don't know what else to do for you. I'm trying the best I can with what I got. So, any questions?
There's only one guy that is qualified to drive that truck, the sewer truck?
One guy that I trust to run the other department's $400,000 truck. All right, I don't want to burn it up or mess it up, because if you've got a sewer blockage and it's not ready for the blockage to be removed because the truck's broken, that's a problem.
We're talking about the pumps, the suction truck? And the truck that has a jet in it that you can put in coverets and-
Yeah, that's a high-dollar piece of equipment, very finicky. Guy's not real thrilled that we even use, because it's his baby. When he gets a call at 2:00 in the morning and a house is flooding with sewer, that truck better be ready to roll. If I take it and I tear it up on something by somebody using it that don't know what they're doing, then that's a problem.
We do have two trucks.
We got two trucks, but only one canals the capacity to clear out the big pipes. The old one's good on a 4-inch or 6-inch sewer line. It doesn't clean a 15-, 18-inch cover. You need to have the pressure. I would love to have a brand-new one, but what, $450,000 probably for a pipe cleaning truck alone? That's a very expensive piece of equipment. So, Mr. Robert, excuse me. Go ahead. You just asked them, did they have any problem with what you was doing? That's right. I'm asking everybody. You got problems, I don't hear from nobody else. What can I do to make your job better? So, this is the problem that I'm having. You're right, I do have a problem. For 10 years, we haven't had no service done in District 3. I totally disagree. I know, I know you will, because Robert Williams, he stay over there, and he know every ditch over there. Mr. Robert, I've been staying over there all my life. I've been dealing with the city councilman, with the city all my life. I know what's been taking place in the area. That's all I ask for, is a simple, can we get the ditch cleaned? That's all I ask for. Devon, you act like they've never been cleaned before. I bet you we cleaned Mooney, I've been here almost 29 years, I bet you we cleaned it 30 times. You go right now to the 1400 block of Mooney and look at the leaves that's piled over the north side of that cover. They cleaned that Thursday. That little rain event makes it look like it hadn't even been touched. You know why I do that? Oh, Mr. Robert, they been out today. They were cleaning the covers out there today. So, they did a good job today. I appreciate that. And listen, I'm not putting the blame on nobody. If it's good, I get credit. My guys do a wonderful job. If it's bad, I get the blame, but my guys still do a wonderful job. They just don't do enough for some people, because it's just not enough to spread out it, to get everybody satisfied. We're doing what we can with what we got. All right, thank you. And I'm not going to take up no more time, but I am going to say this here, by me being a city councilman and was elected by the people, if they ask me to do something, I'm going to ask the city. Now, if I'm doing something wrong by asking the city, I won't ask the city to do nothing else. Devon, it's not that you can't ask. Just put it in a work order system. We got a pile of them. I do an email. The email don't lie. The email, it's to Dory. She creates a work order. It had a date stamp on it when it was put in, and we get to them. You're not the only person calling.
And you're right, the email doesn't lie, so keep asking.
There's a lot that everybody wants done, and we're just doing what we can, so. You can email us, but Dory's going to make a work order.
It's going to get done.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for everything that you been doing.
We're going to get it done.
I'll just leave this with you. When you get a chance, y'all probably, at the last two weeks' worth of work order this coming, look at what's been done, what's been approved, what needs to be done. Some of them request, on a 10-minute job. Some of them request are a week-long. So, be patient. Just know that we got your best interest in our plans to do. We just may not be getting it there as fast as you'd like to see it, but I promise you, we're going to take care of you. It's going to happen. And it's not going to be a one-and-done. We're going to do Booney, we're going to do Carolina, we're going to do Kansas, but we're going to be back, because it's not going to stay perfect. Remember that. You're going to call again, and again, and again. So, anybody got any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Appreciate it.
Mayor's report?
For the sake of time, I just have two items. The sales tax report for December has come in, and we are $98,000 above budget. We have six months to go. Christmas usually kicks us back above where we need to be, and it did do just that. We're in a good place at the moment. Hopefully, the next six months prove that we're in a good space as well. Also, Sunday is the Second Annual Dorothy Maxine Randall Youth Fundraiser. So, if you know anyone who plays basketball, would like to play basketball, it's a tournament, adult teams, $150. Should be a good event. This was the second annual, and it was a good turnout, a good event last year, so it's all for nonprofit, and I'm sure Fresh, who's putting this on, Randall, would definitely love to see you out there.
Thank you. Are there any new businesses in the audience that like to be recognized? All right, motion to approve the minutes of January 22nd, 2019.
I make a motion that we accept and approve those minutes from our January 22nd meeting.
Second at a motion, second at a motion.
Councilman Kip Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon? Resolutions, A, old business none, B, new business. Number one, a resolution to approve the Hammond Barbecue Challenge, Inc., to hold the 2019. It's a smoking barbecue challenge in downtown Hammond on March 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, 2019, lying within the boundaries of Southwest Railroad Avenue from 100 yards south to Coleman Street, to West Thomas Street, East Charles Street, to Hanson Street, Coleman Street, from Kate Street to Southwest Railroad Avenue. Eric Ferris.
Good evening. I'm Eric Ferris, 1201 North Morrison Boulevard. This is our 16th event. It's been going on strong for 16 years, and I'm tired of doing it, so I'm going to let Brian Shirey take over. Y'all may know Brian. He's going to start handling this part. I'll be here for any questions.
Stay close. Brian Shirey, 19299 Country Club Lane, Hammond. Welcome, new council. Thank you. It seems like the past administrations, and we've stood up here for 16 years doing it and have a whole new panel, so. I'm not going to give you the full song and dance. I know it's a long meeting, but I will hit some highlights right here. It is our 16th annual event. We've raised over $400,000 for Tangi Baho and primarily Hammond area nonprofits. Over those 15 years, this will be our 16th. Our beneficiaries are Special Olympics Louisiana, who's headquartered here, TARC, Louisiana Children's Discovery Center, CASA, Richard Murphy Hospice Foundation, Tangi Food Pantry, Our Daily Bread, Tangi Council on Aging, Tangi Humane Society, Hammond Regional Arts Center, Outdoorsman Helping Others, Pro Start Hammond High, and Pro Start Springfield. So, every year, we've had low years, we've had high years, where an outdoor event, but generally between $35,000 and $40,000 that we raise and turn around and disperse to those organizations each year. We are an all-volunteer board. We're a 501(c)(3), all-volunteer board and staff, so the event's completely staffed by volunteers from the community, local civic organizations, and these organizations that are our beneficiaries. None of this would be possible without the gracious support of previous, current administrations and council boards. So, thank you, what I hope will be in advance for you allowing us to continue this. Little bit of, very brief history, it's only like five little bullet points. 55 to 60 pro teams come from 13 states into Hammond on that weekend. KCBS, Kansas City Barbecue Society, is the sanctioning body that does this. We are a premier event, we're the fourth event, it's a national circuit of pros. They start in Florida, they come here, we're always the fourth weekend in March, and it is, we have a waiting list. They want us to expand and continue to bring in more teams, we, we, it's as big as we want it to be. It's always the fourth weekend in March. In addition to the 60, around 60 pro teams that come every year, we have 50-plus local teams that compete for the local championship. All food and beverages donated, and all sales go directly to the organizations that I listed prior. The only thing that I, that I, I want to call to your attention especially, I don't know whose district is downtown, whose is that? Oh, good. My approach? Is that how this works?
I don't know how this looks.
I don't think you have to ask that.
So what this is... Well, that is something that Lacey requested from me, as a result, after last year's meeting we, event, and for many years, we had feedback from downtown retailers about how we affect parking downtown, because we do have a large footprint. So, we've always kind of, in, in gentleman's agreement, had conversations, yeah, this is what we're gonna do, this is what we're gonna do. Lacey asked that we formalize it, she's had the opportunity to review it, I think she's talked to the Downtown Development District. The Downtown Development District also has a, assigned a member to our board to be a liaison, so we formalized it. I don't necessarily, I don't go into all the details, you're welcome to have it, should you need it for any of your constituents downtown. We will be sharing this with the downtown business owners, landlords, residents, to the best of our ability. But it's basically, it's an outline, and then three pages that goes a Wednesday, a Thursday, a Saturday, however it is that it says on here. Won't have to get into any details, if you have any questions, if you have any questions, I can take them now, or anytime hereafter. With that said, I think that's all we had to say. Do you have any questions for me?
Or me?
Make a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the event.
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Sam DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution to approve the Hammond Barbecue Challenge, Inc., to sell beer and alcoholic beverages, specifically daiquiris on the city's property, lying within the boundaries of Southwest Railroad Avenue, from 100 yards south of Coleman Street to West Thomas Street, East Charles Street to Hanson Street, Coleman Street, from Kate Street to Southwest Railroad Avenue, for the hours of 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Thursday, March 21, 2019, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Friday, March 22, 2019, and from 10:00 AM to 11:30 PM on Saturday, March 23, 2019. Mr. Shirey?
Yes, we would like to sell alcohol. Between that and the food vendor, that's our, that's how we get the $40,000.
Make a motion to approve?
I second that motion.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Kip Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution to approve the Hammond Barbecue Challenge, Inc., to obtain a waiver of the city's, the city of Hammond, open container law within the boundaries of Southwest Railroad Avenue, from 100 yards south of Coleman Street to West Thomas Street, East Charles Street to Hanson Street, Coleman Street, from Kate Street to Southwest Railroad Avenue, for the hours of 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Thursday, March 21, 2019, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM from, I'm sorry, on Friday, March 22, 2019, and from 10:00 AM to 11:30 PM on Saturday, March 2000, March 23, 2019. Motion, council?
I make a motion that we approve.
I make a motion second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, he can't help himself.
On Friday, we have a dinner for all the cooks from all over, all over the country. We'd love for y'all to come and meet and mingle, and we always have the mayor come in to say a prayer, but he says he's gonna have somebody do that for him.
Yeah, he said prayers, much better than my prayers.
He does.
There you go. You come in Friday to open up for our dinner, and we'd like for all y'all to come meet everybody.
It's a big deal when the council and the mayor, and our elected officials and locals show up, they talk about it all over the country. It's, it's, it really is a nice little touch. Doesn't take much of your time, or you can come and eat some awesome food.
Put it on my calendar.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Number four, a resolution to ratify and award bids for sewer and drainage system evaluation survey fiscal year 2019, received February 1, 2019. Chuck Spangler.
Good evening, you should have this hyperlinked. This is what the bid summary looks like. You notice we invited five bidders to three submitted bids, and attached this in more detailed spreadsheet of the same numbers. These bids are received on February 1, and we perform this work in, in advance of precipitating repairs at Alida, Gwendolyn, Gwenda, or whatever, Pine Hill subdivision, and Villa West Drainage, and a sewer problem on South Cherry Street. These have all culminated into where we have to do surveys, we have to get some specific type of survey work done, they do the inside repair, or they do the inside investigation, they perform a detailed study, they give us the results, and in a month or two, we'll go back in and let a contractor actually take care of those repairs. This is simply the survey work. This is professional services, we don't typically have to bid it, but I talked to the mayor early in the year, and this is your first run at it, we thought it'd be better to go get prices, to make sure we're not just giving it to somebody. So this is CES, environment, compliance and viral system, very good, very first-class, high-quality work. I'm extremely excited they gave us such a good price, $36,000, our budget was $40,000. So I would recommend awarding this project to the low bidder, Compliance and Viral Systems, for the base bid, the amount of $36,604.
Pleasure, the council?
Make a motion approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
I believe this one needs to be removed from the agenda, so a motion to...
I'd recommend table, not remove.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just table.
Motion to table.
That way it shows up on old business, and I'll be first on the agenda next time.
Ah, tricky. Motion to table, number five?
Make a motion that we table number five?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved to table.
Number six, a resolution to approve city council agenda preparation. This is, I believe you've all seen it, this is, I wanted to put something in writing in the way we submit items for the agenda, so this is modeled off of another city, Covington, and I thought it was good, and I commend the city, they, they've done this, this, for this agenda, and I thought it worked out very well. One thing I will note, and I want everyone to understand, is the deadline will be the Thursday before the agenda, I'm sorry, before the meeting, to submit things for the agenda, but because of things like planning and zoning recommendations, or bids that may come in on the Friday, we would be possibly adding things, but the, the heading will be on the... Yes. Yes. So you would know what the items are that are coming, and it would just be that possible 12 to 24-hour gap in delivering that backup documentation to support the item, but you would have it by Friday, close the business, no later than that. Pleasure, the council?
Make a motion to approve?
I second that motion.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number seven, a resolution to approve the purchase of equipment for disaster recovery to back up all city hall data, in the amount of $49,031. Marcus McMillan.
Good evening, council. I'm looking for permission to purchase the equipment for disaster recovery. Disaster recovery's gonna be equipment that we're gonna use to back up everything from the city at a remote location. The choice for that location is gonna be the EOC building in Amity. We've gained permission from Dawson Primes and the facilitators of that building, that's one of the safest buildings right now in the parish. It can run on its own with, with nothing else attached to it. So we're looking to purchase this equipment, move it there, do a backup of everything here in the city, and that way, if anything happens here, we have a remote location where we can pull from that's not far away from home.
Is there a reason, this might be a silly question, but is there a reason we are not cloud-based? Because that seems like a lot of money for some equipment.
Well, what happens is that when you look at cloud-based, you're looking at amount of storage space. When you look at the amount of storage space, that's where your cost comes from. So as of right now, from the calculations that I've done, the $49,000 that we're looking to spend, that will probably be spent maybe in, you'll probably do maybe five years of cloud space at $49,000. So right now, if we go this route, and we're using what we're currently using here, is something, once it's in place, it's done, and, you know, we can enhance it, we can increase it, or if we decide to change it out in five years, we can, but as more, the more data that we gather, the more expensive cloud would be. As of right now, we can buy other drives and plug into this as needed. Cloud isn't out of the question, but this is, this is gonna be our fix for now.
Interesting. Anyone else? Pleasure, the council?
Make a motion approve?
I second the motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number eight, a resolution to set for public hearing the topic of the search for the next chief, I'm sorry, police chief for public comment and input. Councilman DiVittorio?
I just put together a resolution, I think it's important to have the residents of Hammond feedback, and any kind of, you know, input they may have on the next police chief hire. It's an important job of the city, and a lot of my residents that, you know, it stressed to me in the campaign that they topped two issues, one of them was crime, so I felt that hearing from any public input and comment, even though the mayor appoints them, I think it would help the decision, it might help the decision on a choice of a police chief.
Any questions from the council administration?
We definitely agree with that, which is why last month, at Second Saturday Breakfast, we announced that there would be a public meeting. This follows the same rules and procedures that we used when we hired the last police chief, so it's a similar procedure that we're using, and we would like to propose February 18, next Monday, for that public meeting, so that we can move forward with the process.
What day was that?
February 18. What time?
We are open to times, 5:30 or 6 o'clock usually works best.
I'm on name, I will be out of town, but...
I'll be around.
So, 5:30, I mean, I mean...
That works.
5:30 at Council Chambers?
Yes, when we had these meetings in the past, the one that we held at Council Chambers was the best attended. We did have one at the African-American Heritage Museum, and then I think we had one at the Kenny Recreation Center, and the one that was held here was the, was the best attended.
So is there a reason why it needs to be like next week on Monday? Is, is that...
I think, according to the mayor, he'd like to bring the...
Who are you gonna be in town, any other time during the week?
We just, we get back Wednesday. Yeah.
I think we're trying to facilitate it, so that we could have everything in place to bring the appointment to the next council meeting on the 26th.
Yeah, that's fine, I just didn't know, you know, the big, big rush, I didn't, you know, it's kind of, it'd be nice if some of the council members can make it, it would be nice to kind of make sure they can.
Sounds like Monday's a mess, you could reschedule to like Thursday or something.
I don't know with the council agenda, I looked at the council agenda for a few days, so that was...
Be mindful that Monday is a holiday.
Yeah. President's Day.
President's Day.
I can do Thursday.
That's not a holiday for the city.
Yeah. It is chamber after hours, but that's...
Thursday is the 21st, I know that there's an NAACP meeting in here at 6, or 6:30.
It's 6 o'clock.
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to make it Thursday.
What about the 25th or the 28th?
25th got booked with my district today, so that is...
Can we review the, what I have on the calendar, and I can let you all know, and we can move forward from there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we need to table it without a, I mean, we can pass it without a date.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pleasure, the council?
I would just recommend, I mean, like if we can agree that the meeting would be set before the next council meeting, before the 26th.
Yeah. I can do that. Should we, are you proposing we amend it to say that in the resolution?
If you verbally agree, that's fine with me, I'm just...
Okay.
Making sure we're all on the same page.
Gotcha. Let's not amend the resolution, but I'm okay with that, do it before the 26th. So pleasure, the council, for this as it's written, number eight.
Need a motion.
Need a motion, sir.
Someone needs to make a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
I second it.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number nine, a resolution for the city council to hold an executive session for purposes of evaluating each of the top three applicants for police chief, as identified by the mayor, and to review the analysis of their applications with each candidate to evaluate the qualifications of each. Following the executive session, the city council will issue an opinion whether each applicant is qualified to serve as police chief. Councilman DiVittorio?
I put that together, because I feel that it's important to get the council's opinion and education on, on the three top applicants, and so where they're confident in any decision that's made, you know, it's an appointed job, it's not elected, so therefore you will have residents from time to time complaining about different issues in crime, and it'd be nice to know that, well, if I stamped off on them and approved it, that, you know, we made a, together we made a decision that, at that time, that was the best qualified person at that time. You know, I like to learn from, you know, past mistakes, and making sure appointments are, are right, appointments.
Public comment, or questions?
Good evening, my name is Mason Foster, 800 West Dakota Street, Hammond, Louisiana. I was really surprised when I saw the agenda that Ms. Banks sends out, that this was on the agenda. Let me tell you that I served as mayor for 12 years, served on the city council for four years, and this is the first time that I have ever seen the city council get involved with the appointment of someone to be a department head, and of course, the police chief is actually a department head, according to the charter. I would like to remind the council that Section 307, powers and duties of the mayor, is to be the person that appoints all employees and all department heads in the city. I would like to further point out to the council that Section 205 of the charter, under prohibition, specifically says, except as provided elsewhere in this charter, neither the council nor any of its members shall involve themselves in any manner in the appointment, removal, direction, or supervision of any city administrative officer or employee. Section 4.04 of the charter says, the head of the police department shall be the police chief who shall be appointed by the mayor, who shall be appointed by the mayor, subject to the confirmation by the council in accordance with applicable state law. Now let me say that I have no hesitation to say that this council has absolute authority to approve any appointment by the mayor. Let me also say right now that the mayor has not called me about this, but as mayor and when I was on the city council, and Mr. Kudrin will tell you this, that I was very cognizant of the separation of powers between the council and the mayor. Now, the proposal that you have before you now is to have an executive session. I think that the law, and I'll refer this to the city attorney, and I have sent each one of you an email outlining this, thank you, Mr. Leon, for returning my email, responding to it, that the law specifically says that, under exceptions in the open meetings law, nothing in this paragraph shall permit an executive session for discussion of the appointment of the award of a public contract. But this, this provision says that it's illegal to have an executive session to discuss this. There is no exception that is allowed. So what I'm asking the council, and I appreciate the fact that you're going to have a public hearing, I think that that's necessary, I think that it's well, but I would like to ask this council to please, don't start getting involved in the appointment of the police chief or any other employee in the city. First of all, it's against the law to have an executive session. Second of all, it's against the charter for you to start moving forward with this. Thank you very much and I would, Madam President, like to have this, these provisions incorporated into the minutes of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in public comment?
I got a conference to go up there.
Please come up, state your name and address.
Terrence Lee, past second rose hill, Baptist church. This is one coming up. I know part of the procedure real well and I'm taking inventory. I came to the meeting to see how the new council would fare in their processing of public affairs and public business. My concern is, I'm listening to our late mayor talk about law and talk about, talking about, talking about, you know, the appointments of, of public officials and things like that. My concern is, is that if this is a corporate body operating in its armed capacity to better one's city or better one's community, then charters can be changed. I mean, you have charters in place, but they could be amended, they could be changed. You have a charter, but if it's not effective, you can amend the charter. All right? If something that has just been in place just because it's in a book does not mean it's effective. Just because it's been dialogued in the past, that may not help the community today. So what I'm saying to you, keep open-mindedness in regard to every decision because the power of the people have been given to you to represent the people. And as, as the same has been given to the mayor to represent the town or the people of the city. So collaboration is what I'm saying. If it's a call to collaboration to do what you see is best for the city, then do it with that spirit, do it that mentality. And I, and that's basically what I wanted to say, I wanted to say that for the record, that, you know, you can have all of the charters wrote in place, but they're not law. Charter is not law. You can amend charters. I just wanted to say that those things can be amended. Anything's like that in relationship to making one city better or one community better, know that you have a right to, to lay that on the table to make it better as a corporate body, as one decision, you know, everybody on the same page. That's it. Have a good day.
I think you said that well. Thank you.
Charter can be changed by the votes.
I was going to say, and it was voted on by the people and it was amended several times by the people, so it truly is a collaborative effort. And it's a collaborative effort to bring forward an appointment, which is a singular person, to the council after the mayor and the city staff have fully vetted those and bringing that singular appointment to the council for approval. It is really a truly collaborative process.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is David Tinnell. I live at 803 West Idaho, Hammond, Louisiana. When I read the provisions and I did email you, thank you for responding to me, I wrote to my councilman, I think that if you start having executive sessions and taking the top three candidates, you have crossed the line to starting to interview candidates. And that's outside of your purview. You can read the charter. There's a clear distinction in the powers of the council and there's a clear distinction of the powers of the mayor. Eventually, you have to approve that appointment. But when you start taking the top three candidates or the top five candidate, doesn't matter, why don't you take all 15 of them? But when you start doing that, you start, you have crossed the line, you are now conducting an interview and think about it, after the interview, after your executive session, you're going to come out and give a recommendation and your stamp of approval and how you're going to do that without showing preference for someone? And that's not your job. It, it's just crossing the line. It's my opinion, besides everything else that Mayor Foster said, I certainly agree with him as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I still feel the same way I did. If, you know, I would be open to a public, I think, you know, I don't really know exactly if that's illegal or illegal, if it's just in a charter. I mean, I don't really, you know, I'm sure there's some, some, yeah, that's what they feel, but I haven't really been, been told otherwise that that is actually illegal anyways, so.
If it's in the charter, it's legal until you change the charter. So that's something that you pay attention to.
Yeah.
And the charter does have separation of powers and I haven't seen the entire resolution. I'm just reading off of what's on the agenda. But what's on the agenda, there's a couple of things that you need to pay attention to. The first is, to go an executive session can be done under, under limited purposes and there are only certain ways to do that. And, and there is a question about the appointment of a person to a public body. I'm not sure this is an appointment of a person to a public body, it's the hiring employee. But yet, that, that's the purview of the mayor to make one suggestion of an appointee, one person to the council that you vote yes or you vote no for. So, so to raise it, evaluating top three applicants, that's really for the mayor to do evaluation and-
It was for the mayor to bring his top three applicants?
But, but I don't know that you can require that as councilman, I'm just being, I'm just trying to be objective in how it works in, in, in the, in the dynamic between the legislative branch and the executive branch. And I don't know that you can, you could, you could go into executive session to discuss character competence of a person. There are limitations on that. You've got to know who they are, you've got to give them the opportunity. They may not want it discussed in executive session and they can say, I don't want it done. So, so I'm not sure as this is written, it, it can be enforced. You certainly have the ability to, to confirm the applicant that's submitted by the mayor and you have that absolute right to do that. Whether you have the right to require the mayor to identify his top three, I'm not sure about that. Whether, whether you're required to do analysis of applications and qualifications, I'm not sure. For three, you could do that. You could certainly do it for the person that has identified the mayor as being his choice. So, so I've got just a couple of questions about the details of the wording of the resolution as it's written. And I'm assuming this is the whole thing, this is just what I've seen that's on the agenda.
That is the whole-
So that's my comments. That's, that's, that's my, that's my comments.
Well, you know, the whole point of it was, I think when we're, all the council members get brought in an appointment by the mayor to our, to us to, to approve, then, then I'm involved then whenever I have to approve it. So at that point, you know, it, the whole, the whole event of getting an appointment could be changed to an extent, you know? I mean, I, you know, I think one of our council members suggested to be a part of the, the process and that was shut down at that point. So that was the whole reason of, of wanting to make sure that the, the appointment, we all had a whole idea of exactly the top three, top two, whatever you want to call it at that time. And then so whenever he picks one out of the three, then we're able to feel confident that, you know, we, we listened to all of them and, and everything and, and we made the right call whenever, you know, we approved. Or if we deny, we may make a wrong decision of denying somebody that maybe should have gotten it. So that was where the whole, the whole process started.
Yeah, I think executive session is one of, that's another overlay that creates some, some difficulty in doing this in executive session. You could certainly, if you wanted to comment about the applicants, comment about that, you could do that in open session, that's your right as a council member. But to, but to require the mayor to limit to three, I don't know that you could do that. You could certainly confirm or deny his choice and then go in executive session is another, another thing you've got to be careful about to the extent it's required, allowed by law.
The council has been invited to participate in the process in addition to that. You were each provided all the interview questions and asked for feedback twice. There was no feedback provided on this. You were also informed about the public meeting, we've all agreed about that and moving forward with that. And then you were allowed to speak with the applicant. We even offered that, to speak with the applicant prior to coming to the meeting. You can meet with them one-on-one or two-on-one and have any, any sort of questions that you have answered at that time.
So at this time, I guess we're looking to move forward or, or deny, I guess?
Well, there just needs to be a motion on the table for wherever the pleasure of the council is.
So what I'm making a motion on?
Approve any, yeah.
Approve, deny, remove.
Or some version of it.
Or change something.
Make a motion on, we keep talking about it, another time.
You, you're saying you want to table it?
Yes. I like that, I want to table it.
Make a motion to table.
Want to make a motion to table. I second their motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved to table.
Final adoption of an ordinance, number one, a final adoption of an ordinance to transfer 100 and, I'm sorry, $396,800 from the sales tax to a three fund balance to various funds as described in Budget Change Form 1908. I'm going to immediately make a motion to divide these into five separate items where we will take the, the voting of them under one, two, three, four, and five. So that's my motion.
Make a motion approve?
Second.
Second. Yeah, second that motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved to separate into five items.
I'll take the first one, the fire department. How do you want me to describe that?
Fire department, the mag corrections and to establish the new pay grid for $70,000.
Make a motion to approve?
I second their motion.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Motion approved.
The second one is the request concerning meter reading software. It's to move $16,800 into the data processing line.
I make a motion that we approve? Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Sam DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
The third one is the airport road improvement. It's the new construction project. It's to move $60,000 into capital expenditures.
Make a motion to approve?
I second their motion.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
The fourth one is the airport land acquisition. This is matching $1 million from the FAA. It is $150,000 to be moved into the grant match fund.
I'll make a motion to approve?
You can declare the motion fail for lack of a second if that's-
Declare the motion fail for lack of a second. Number five.
The fifth one is the airport tower elevator build-out. It's matching $284,500 from two grant funds. It's to move $100,000 into the airport capital projects.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman woman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
And who else? Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Introduction for, of ordinance and to set for public hearing. Number one, introduction of an ordinance for an expanded conditional use request by Enrico Rogers to allow a mobile home on Lot 24, Block 9, Greenville Park subdivision at 107 West Newman Street, Zoned RS3. Recommended approval with the, with a conditions by zoning commission. Tracy Slacy.
Good afternoon, counsel. I'm asking for the zoning commission for your permission to introduce this for an ordinance on February 26th to allow placement of a mobile home on Newman Street. This is in Councilman Wells' district and they recommend approval with these two conditions.
I approve.
Motion to introduce.
Motion, motion to introduce. I second their motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Public hearing is set for February 26th, 2019.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye.